Everybody, welcome to the Baldwin County Commission, our regular meeting. Today is, what is it, December the 17th. Our pastor is here. I've asked Pastor John Shale with the Harvest Fields Church in Somerdale. And after we do the invocation, we're going to have Commissioner Gruber to do the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, will you come up? Thank you.
Dear Father, we have a lot to be thankful for, but the thing we're thankful for the most is Jesus. Jesus, thank you for what you did for us. You changed everything, and we really appreciate that. Father, we thank you for creating this great nation. We thank you for the wonderful plan and purpose you have for the United States, for Alabama, and for Baldwin County. And Lord, I thank you that you have a great purpose for Baldwin County. And I thank you, Lord, that Commissioner Ball, Commissioner McKenzie, Commissioner Underwood, and Commissioner Gruber are here, Lord, to know and do your will. And that's exciting to have commissioners that have a heart to do what you want them to do. And Lord, as we live here as citizens of Baldwin County, we want to see your kingdom increase here, and we want to do our part to be good citizens of this county. And we thank you for this, and we thank you for the bright future that you have for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, the first thing is on our adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for December the 3rd, 2024, regular meeting.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Ball?
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. All right, before we do the agenda on the consent, I wanted to remind everybody, oh, excuse me, let me back up, on B A 2, notification of interim payments approved by the Clerk Treasury as allowed under Policy 8.1, there's no action needed. But before we do the consent agenda, C R 6 has been removed from the consent, and G A 1, a denim item, has been added to the consent. So I just want to let you all be aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt our consent agenda as outlined.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second, all signify by saying aye. Aye. Well, we're going to go to presentations. Commissioner Ball?
I need to have somebody come up here that's going to be receiving this presentation, Ms. Felicia Anderson. I'll read what this certificate of recognition says, that this presented to Felicia Anderson in recognition of being awarded the Lynn Hasty Bozone Citizen of the Year 2024 Award by the Stockton Heritage Association for her outstanding work in promoting, protecting, and preserving the unique culture and character of the Stockton Landmark District in North Baldwin. So, Ms. Felicia, this is your certificate of recognition. I will leave it up to you if you want to give a speech.
Felicia.
I think they have something to say.
You guys something to say, too?
Yes.
I'm sure they do. I'm going to go back up here.
And then we'll come down and get a picture with you.
Good morning. I'm Georgine Gosse Connor, and I'm president of the Stockton Heritage Association. And our association started about 30 years ago to protect, preserve, and promote the unique character and heritage of Stockton. About 10 years ago, we saw the need to recognize outstanding and deserving citizens in North Baldwin, in the Stockton Landmark District, who have contributed to our community, the quality of life, they have exemplified civic service of high character, and I could go on and on. So we were very, very happy and pleased to award the Lynn Hasty Bozone Citizen of the Year Award for 2024 to Ms. Felicia Anderson. She is outstanding by any measure. She has certainly endeared us because of that fabulous, fantastic Bicentennial Park Light Show, thanks to you County Commissioners. She's endeared herself to us for that. But there is so many, many things Felicia has done, and this is really just a very small part of what she has done for the county, Stockton, and really, all of Alabama. I want to share just a quick letter that I received, or our organization received this week upon hearing of Felicia's receiving this award. It reads, "Dear Ms. Connor, On this Alabama Day, I commend the Stockton Heritage Association for its selection of Felicia Anderson to receive the Lynn Hasty Bozone Citizen of the Year Award for 2024. The high regard in which Felicia is held by Stockton and Baldwin County is shared by other Alabamians familiar with her dedication to strengthening her community and enriching the lives of Baldwin County residents. Felicia's commitment to making the past accessible and relevant has elevated the Baldwin County Department of Archives and History to a place of preeminence among local history organizations in our state. While protecting and sharing the history of some of the oldest settlements in Alabama, the agency also works to preserve the history continuing to unfold in our fastest-growing county. Key to this success are Felicia's professionalism and spirit of service. She seeks continually to find ways to improve the historical resources in her care, and she works to impart the spirit to others. By mentoring young staff and giving them access to professional development opportunities, Felicia is investing in the future of the Department of Archives and History for the entire county. I regret I am able to attend this deserved recognition of Felicia before the Baldwin County Commission, but from afar, I will be congratulating Felicia and congratulating Baldwin County for having this meritorious citizen in its midst. Sincerely, Steve Murray, Director, the State of Alabama Department of Archives and History." We are so proud of you, Felicia, and we claim you as one of our own, and thank you County Commissioners for this recognition of her today.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, y'all still got stuff to say?
Just real quick, good morning. My name is Laureen Harms, and I'm the president of the Stockton Civic Club. On behalf of the board and all the members, we just want to thank Felicia Anderson for all her hard work and dedication to each project she undertakes. From old-time days to the awesome Christmas lights displayed at Bicentennial Park, we thank you. Her organizational skills, her dedication of her love of the county, and her job as a parent, and all that she accomplishes. Felicia, the citizens of Stockton and North Baldwin County, say thank you.
You want to say something?
I wrote it down, so I won't forget anything. First and foremost, I want to praise the Lord for blessing me with the opportunity to serve this incredible community. I'm also deeply grateful to my husband and family for their support and understanding as I dedicate so much of myself to my work. Thank you all so much for this incredible honor. I'm truly humbled to be named Citizen of the Year by the Stockton Heritage Association, and I want to express my sincere gratitude to you all and the other organizations who have selected me for this recognition. I know there are many other worthy candidates, and to be chosen is both humbling and deeply meaningful. While this award comes from Stockton, I believe it represents not just this town, but the broader Baldwin County community. As Director of Archives and History for Baldwin County Commission, my mission is to preserve the rich history that connects us all, and this recognition speaks to the importance of that work across this entire county. Serve one another in love, and I've always believed that my role in preserving Baldwin County's history is an act of service, service to our past, to our community, and to the generations who will come after us. I'm incredibly grateful to serve alongside so many who share this commitment. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to this commission, Commissioner Ball, Commissioner Chairman McKenzie, Commissioner Underwood, Commissioner Gruber, and to my supervisor, my coach, Roger, and to this Baldwin County Commission family. This recognition is not mine alone, but a reflection of the amazing community. I'm blessed to be a part of and the incredible people.
Take your time, we understand.
I have the privilege to work alongside. Together, we preserve and celebrate the stories that shape our past and guide our future. Together, we make this community stronger. As I get ready to go to my seat, I'm reminded of a scripture in Mark 10:45, "For even the Son of Man came not to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as a ransom for many." This reminds me that true service is not about recognition or accolades, but about giving yourself to make the world a better place. That's it.
Commissioner Ball, you want to say anything?
I just want to express my sincere thanks to the Stockton Club for doing this and recognizing Ms. Felicia. She is a great asset to our staff and our commission, and does a lot of good things, like she said, not only in Stockton, but all over Baldwin County. But it's well to receive reward, and congratulations, Felicia, much deserved, for this presentation and that certificate, and they did a great job selecting the perfect candidate for that. So, thank you all.
Anybody? Yeah. I just want to say this, Felicia, since I've been on the commission, you've been very helpful for me in taking me to see the Bicentennial Park and getting me involved, and to see what the citizens do, or, excuse me, the staff does up there, and the lights and everything, it's just awesome. I don't even know where she's at, I haven't lost her. Oh, sorry. I was looking over there, sorry. But I just want to say thank you, because that area is blessed to have you, and thank you for the Stockton Society to do that for you, to recognize you. Because, and like I said at WKRG, or one of these news things that we went to, you are dedicated. You know, they said, Matt, we need to be there at 6:20, and I said, 6:20 in the afternoon? She said, no, 6:20 in the morning. So, and that's in Mobile, so you are dedicated in what you do. And it was a blessing to be with you and to listen to you talk about the Bicentennial Park and the Christmas lights. And so I'm hoping that we can continue that in the future. So I just want to say thank you for what you've done.
I just want to say thank you as well. It's always a top-notch production, you do a great job.
Thank you, Felicia. You know, we've been through a lot of projects, and, you know, you've always been able to show a strong sense of ability to make these things happen. And I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion that we put this in the record for this meeting.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Gruber?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we get, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Great job, Felicia. All right, next is on our list is D A 2, commending Ms. Lynn Bowles. Ms. Bowles. Yeah, please come up here. I'm going to give you a view of jail. I'm going to read this. Come on. Yes. "This resolution is commending Lynn Jones Bowles, upon the occasion of her retirement, as librarian of the Baldwin County Law Library and director of the Baldwin County Bar Association, and for her years of distinguished public service. Whereas Lynn Bowles is a graduate of Baldwin County High School and Auburn University, and Ms. Bowles obtained her Bachelor of Science degree in 1977. And whereas Ms. Bowles began her career in February of 1982 with Baldwin County Law Library as the first law librarian. And whereas Ms. Bowles began her joint career in September of 2002 with the Baldwin County Bar Association as the first executive director. And whereas Ms. Bowles has served by providing her expertise, time, and service to the citizens and attorneys of Baldwin County. And whereas Ms. Bowles was instrumental in remodeling the law library to provide private meeting rooms for attorneys. And whereas Ms. Bowles was instrumental in production and placement of judges' pictures throughout the first floor of the courthouse. And whereas Ms. Bowles served on numerous boards and committees, including the Baldwin County Sheriff Citizens Advisory Committee, Baldwin County Commission Distinguished Service Award, SAVLP Margaret DeMinterville Award, Baldwin County Association of Legal Professional Boss of the Year Award, North Baldwin Infirmary Authority Award, Children's Sunday School Teacher, and Past President of Circle Three at First Methodist Church. U M W Special Mission Recognition Award, 2005 and 2012, Baldwin County Impact 100, Charter Member, and Secretary for Salim Val Christian Retreat Ministry. And whereas Ms. Bowles was married for 43 years to the late Bayless Bowles Jr., and together they have two children, Bayless E. Bowles III, and the late Kinnor, Clintor J. Bowles, and two grandchildren. And whereas Ms. Bowles, many accomplishments over her 40 years of public service. And whereas Ms. Bowles will enjoy time spent with family and grandchildren, travel a bit, and do some volunteer work. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that we hereby gratefully commend Lynn Jones Bowles on the occasion of her retirement from the Law Library and Bar Association, and recognize her distinguished and committed public service on behalf of the Baldwin County Commission and the citizens of Baldwin County. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution recorded in the official minutes." Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution recorded in the official minutes."
John Rose, John is the bar president.
Do you want to get the picture?
Sure.
Come on. Look at this one.
I just do want to thank everybody, especially the commissioners, for the wonderful award. I have been, I've spent part, over half my life in the law library. I feel like if I, I needed to be caught there to spend the night sometimes because I would just spend so much of my time, but I am honored and grateful for the opportunity to have been there. I'm looking forward to retirement and they have not found a replacement for me yet, so I may be there a little bit longer.
Well, I want to say this too, and I think Commissioner Ball just mentioned it too, that, you know, we're naming the law library after you too, so.
I know, I'm very honored, very honored, yes. Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bows.
Commissioners, we have a resolution.
Making a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Congratulations. All right, before we get to the public hearing on these other, the things that we have with highway and planning and zoning, there's the little things that I want to just mention to the public that's out, that's here. It's key points to remember. This is an official meeting. Identify yourself, clearly state your name and where you live when you speak. Stay on topic. When you come up here at the podium, come here and speak. I'm going to give you three minutes. If you're here to speak on behalf of a group, please tell me what that group is. Who are they? You get five minutes if you have, if you're speaking on a group. Be respectful of others. Avoid interrupting, making personal attacks, or using inflammatory language. We're here, we're professionals, we can do better than what we've seen over this country. I want to do better here. Be factual, base your comments on accurate information and personal experience. You got something to talk about, talk about it up here at the podium. Don't come, don't be in the crowd and cheer and laugh and boo and clap and all that. We want to be professional, we want the citizens to see that we are professionals and we're doing the right thing for Baldwin County. But other than that, that's all I have. It's pretty simple, easy. So, Mark, on highway.
Hate to follow that last group. I'll do my best, though. For y'all's consideration this morning, we have two public right-of-way vacation requests. Both of these rights-of-way are unimproved and unopened. They're not being utilized by the county and we see no use for the right-of-way in the future. The first request is for a portion of the 100-foot wide Fox Lane to Steelwood at Point Clear. Staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2025-030 to approve the vacation of this right-of-way in accordance to State Statute 23-4-2, which also requires the public hearing today for this right-of-way vacation consideration. Do you want me to cover both, or do you want to vote and then we'll move on to the next one?
You go on to the next one.
Okay. The second vacation request is for a 30-foot wide portion of unimproved, unopened right-of-way from Airport Road to West Fern Avenue. This particular right-of-way actually goes through what used to be Roar Industries, it's now Collins Aerospace, but still owned by Roar Inc. So this is an old Magnolia Land Company right-of-way that is in existence, it has no use, there's actually a physical building in the middle of this right-of-way that has been there. Obviously Roar's been in Foley for a very, very long time, and so staff does recommend vacation of this right-of-way. We see this request from Roar Inc. requesting to clean this up, and we are recommending adoption of Resolution 2025-033, which will approve this vacation in accordance to Section 23-4-2 and 23-4-20 of Code of Alabama 1975.
Brad, can we do both of these in the same public hearing, or we got to open up two public hearings?
There's no prohibition on doing it in the same public hearing. It might make the record cleaner to have two separate public hearings, so that's kind of what I'd prefer, just for posterity's sake.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys have before we open up the public hearing.
I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry, commissioners, y'all got any questions?
So it will benefit if we do the second one with the 30-foot unopened right-of-way to give it. And who, and I missed your, some of your comments, but what did you say? So we would turn it over to the city of Foley?
No, this would actually be a vacation, so the right-of-way would be vacated and it would go to Roar Inc. Who owns the property? In the first one, there is a Mr. and Mrs. Gilbert that live on either side, they're of the same family. The right-of-way goes through their property, or is our property in between their two properties. So each one of those would take possession of one-half of that right-of-way, and all of the property owners in that area were contacted and are in support of this vacation as well.
All right, thank you.
I find it interesting, they built the building on top of a right-of-way, but that's okay.
Yeah, we've seen this on some of the old Magnolia land.
We're good.
Thank you, Mark. All right, I'll open up the public hearing on case number, excuse me, case number VAC-24-4. Vacation of 100-foot unopened. Anybody here to speak on that? Nobody's here, so. You want to speak on it?
Well, I signed up to speak.
Boy, come here, I'm sorry, I didn't see your, what was your name?
Neil Gilbert. I didn't know if I was supposed to speak or not.
No, you're more welcome, come on up here and speak.
But I'm happy if.
Were you opposed to it, or are you in favor of it?
I'm in favor of it.
He's a landowner.
You're the landowner, so if you don't want to, yeah, okay. No, you're fine. Anybody else that wants to speak on this? Okay. Close the public hearing on this case.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this case VAC-24-4.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No.
It's done.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing for case number VAC-24-5. Vacation of a 30-foot unopened. All right, I have nobody signed up. Is anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case number VAC-24-5, vacation of a 30-foot unopened, unimproved right-of-way for Airport Road and West Fern Avenue, north 2,640 feet to a 40-foot unopened right-of-way.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Before I go any further, I do want to mention that the denim attached, the proof it advertised is attached to it, so I want to make that as record. So I got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, planing is on.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Ready when you are, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready, go ahead.
So commissioners, first of several rezoning cases we have for you today, we will begin, we'll begin with Z24-17, and this is entitled Point Clear Village Phase 3. This is 2.2 acres rezoning from B2, which is a business district to RSF2, which is a single-family residential. This is in Planning District 26, and this is very near the intersection of County Road 32 and scenic highway 98. You see your zoning map on screen, and you see the nearby zonings, you have RMF6, RSF2 close by. As you've seen on previous applications, we have that same zoning map side by side with the aerial image. I'll summarize the zoning factors on this next slide right here. Fully compliant with 6 out of the 11, the remaining factors will be mitigated once the applicant comes before us with a subdivision. The applicant is aware, for example, they will have to install a common driveway to satisfy some traffic issues. This is recommended for approval by staff and unanimously recommended approval by the planning commission. Happy to answer questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
All right, hear none, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll begin to public.
All right, open up the public hearing on case number Z24-17. Anybody here to speak on Point Clear Village rezoning? Y'all got to bear with me, look at this. I think everybody's here for the latter, the latter one. All right. I have nobody, ES7. Thank you. I have nobody signed up to speak on this one, nobody wants to speak on this one? Anybody here? All right. Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion to approve case Z24-17.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And next, we have Z24-41 Fernandez Property, and so this is approximately 3 and 1/2 acres from RSFE. And refresh the commissioners' memory, RSFE is a state-size zoning, 80,000 square-foot lots. Request is to rezone it to RSF1. Our understanding is the applicant would like to have a two-lot subdivision in the future, there's not quite enough property to divide it without rezoning. And so this is in Planning District 32, this is south of US 98, this is not too far from the Lilian community, and you see the basic property information on screen. And we have our zoning map and our aerial image side by side, you see the proximity to RSF1 in this area. And then I'll summarize the rezoning factors here. 10 of the 11 factors are in full compliance, and the, there's a slight quirk with the master plan that the moderate development that it contemplates does not extend quite onto this property. The staff had no objection and recommends approval, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions, commissioners? No questions? Open up the public hearing on ES2. This is Z24-41. I have nobody signed up. Is anybody here that wants to speak on that case? All right, nobody's here to speak on that case? Close the public.
Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 2025-37, which approves case number Z24-41 Fernandez Property rezoning, as it pertains to rezoning of approximately 3.5 acres, more or less, located in Planning District 32, from RSFE residential family district to RSF1 residential single-family.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. It approved. Pass. All right.
And Chairman, commissioners, next, before you, we will have the Howell Property. And let me get our slides launched. And so this is a request for rezoning from B2 to B4, and this is Z24-42 Howell Property. And thanks to Brittany Epling for preparing this item. This is right on the border between Planning District 22 and Planning District 33, but it's in Planning District 22. And what I'll call the commissioners' attention to, if you look at your locator map on the left, this is, this property is several parcels that are taxed together. You'll notice it's immediately adjacent to B4 to the west and B4 to the north, and then B3 to the south. There's common ownership between the B2 and the B4. The applicant would like to have common zoning on all of their properties. And we have a zoom in here where you can see that a bit more clearly. And in terms of our rezoning factors, 8 of the 11 factors are fully compliant, number 11 is not applicable. The rest of the factors will be mitigated by the fact that just about any use on this property will trigger a commission site plan, but also from a traffic and an access standpoint, they will have to satisfy any requirements of ALBO. And so this was a staff recommendation of approval, unanimous planning commission recommendation approval, and happy to answer questions.
Commissioners?
I don't have.
No questions.
No questions. Open up the public hearing on Z24-42, the Howell Property. I have nobody signed up. Is anybody in the audience that wants, that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this piece of property? Close the public hearing on this case. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve on case number Z24-42, the Howell Property Rezon.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second. Commissioner Gruber second it.
All right, Commissioner Gruber second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. It passed. All right, ES4, case number Z24-43.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is case Z24-43, the Wild Property. Their request is to rezone 11 acres from RSF2 to RR for an additional commercial building. Here's the location of the property within the county. They're located in Planning District 14 and currently zoned RSF2. The property is located south of State Highway 104 and east of County Road 49, near the town of Silver Hill. And their proposed zoning request is to RR, Rural Agricultural District, to allow for an additional commercial building on the property. Here's the locator map and the site map. The subject property is surrounded by RSF2 residential single-family district zoning, and the adjacent land uses are residential, agricultural, and vacant, respectively. Here are the factors that staff looks at in a rezoning, and in this particular case, they've only met 3 of the 11 factors, with 11 being not applicable. Staff's recommendation for this case is denial, and the planning commission recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 3. And at this time, I'd like to invite our planning director, Jay Dixon, to the podium. He has additional comments on this case.
Good morning, Chris. I just wanted to add a little bit of more insight on our staff recommendation on this and this application. During the planning commission, there was a lot of discussion, you know, the proposed expansion is stated to be for expansion of the existing indoor batting cages there, which, you know, the batting cage business is not an issue at all in this case. But what we wanted to be clear on where our recommendation for denial on this application is that, you know, the RR district that's being required is one of the most lenient districts that we have in our zoning waters. It allows pretty much everything in the world. I mean, by right, you can do animal clinics and kennels, you can do farm improvement use, nurseries, landscaping, local commercial uses, offices, all agriculture uses, convenience stores, auto parts stores, and then with commission site plan approval, you can have light industrial boarding and dormitory housing, general commercial, pawn shops, automobile repair, hardware stores. So pretty much, it's actually easier to go through the list of things that aren't allowed in RR. So RR, the only disallowed uses are general industrial, adult uses, racetracks, liquor stores, mixed-use commercial, medical office, sanitarium, correctional facilities like jails, mobile home parks, and multifamily. So when you rezone this, what the applicant for rezoning this is that this is, this particular property, if you look at, is completely surrounded by RSF2, and it's very close to the town of Silver Hill town limits. So this is not really the situation where you want to open that kind of incompatible, potential incompatible uses with zoning in the middle of a bunch of RSF2 properties. So again, you know, there was a lot of discussion in the planning commission about, it was about the batting cage use, and it's really not about the batting cage use because it's legal nonconforming, they can continue operating, they could expand with outdoor batting cages, there's no problem doing that. But by rezoning to RR, you open up to warehouse uses and a whole lot of other things that could be, over time, become an issue for that neighborhood that's completely surrounded by a single-family residential. Be glad to answer any questions to clarify our recommendation on this.
I don't have any questions.
I've already asked all the questions before that I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Gruber, you got any questions? All right, I'm opening up the public hearing. I have nobody signed up for this case. Is anybody that's in the audience that did not sign up for this case that wants to speak? All right, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny this request for rezoning.
Second.
Wild property.
We have a motion and a second for a denial. Denial. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
I would like to make a comment. I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
There's just too many overwhelming reasons why not to do this one. And I thank staff for clarifying all those things because it was a little bit confusing as to the message that we were getting from, you know, it was recommended denial by the staff, approval by the planning commission, a five-three, so it wasn't unanimous. And so, I appreciate you guys answering all my questions. Thank you.
All right. Next case? What's the next one? Fletcher?
Yes. So, this is case Z 24. Yes, this is case Z 2444, the Fletcher Property. Their request is to rezone 22 acres from B C Z to B2 for an event venue. Here's the location of the property within the county. They're located in Planning District 39. This property is south of County Road 32 and east of State Highway 181 in Fairhope. They would like to rezone to B2, which is Neighborhood Business District, to allow for an existing event venue on the property that was installed prior to the adoption of zoning to be expanded. Here's the locator map and the site map. The subject property is surrounded by RV2 and B C Z to the north, some residential to the south, B C Z to the east and to the west, we see commercial. Adjacent land uses include residential, agricultural, and vacant. Here are the factors that staff looks at. At a reason request, they have met all but two of the factors. And staff's recommendation is approval, and the planning commission recommended approval with a vote of eight to zero. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Of course.
No question. Open up the public hearing on case number ES4, oh, excuse me, case number Z 24-4, no, the Fletcher, Z 24-44 property. Sorry, there's so many cases here. I don't have anybody signed up for this case. Is anybody in the audience that wants to speak on about this case that didn't sign up? Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case number Z 24-44 Fletcher Property.
A second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Case number Z 24-45.
And Commissioners, we have Z 2445, forgive me if I mispronounce to our citizen, Wees or Weiss Property. Commissioners, we see this a couple times a year where there's a request to take something, a piece of property that has a residential zoning and revert to an RA zoning type. And that's a request for you here. I'm presenting on behalf of Callan McKenzie. And so, this is located in Planning District 15. See your property information on screen. And you see your zoning map on the left side. And what we believe is that this may possibly have been an anticipated future development to one of the subdivisions that, for whatever reason, has never been developed. And so, a private owner is wishing to put their home site there in some of the agriculture type uses they would like to have. They have to rezone to RA to have those types of uses. And so, I will summarize our rezoning factors. Factor 11 is not applicable. 10, otherwise, all the other zoning factors are in compliance for this request. Staff recommends approval. It was a seven-to-one recommendation for approval by the planning commission. One of the planning commissioners had some concerns about the agriculture uses. So, what you'll see here is we've memorialized in our analysis here that the applicant may need to handle some wetland delineations or other matters to develop their property. Happy to answer questions.
What were the concerns?
The...
Specifically?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, and what came up during the public hearing was that the applicant may wish to have horses or other livestock on the property. And one of the planning commissioners had a bit of trepidation with that.
To have livestock?
Yes, sir. Which they wouldn't be able to have if it remained an RSF1 or RSF2 zoning type.
And there's RA all around it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just kidding. Okay. I'm good.
All right. Any questions? Anybody else? Open up the public hearing on case Z 24-45. I have nobody signed up. Is anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this case that didn't sign up? Close the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve Z 24-45, the Weiss Property rezoning.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve Weiss Property rezoning. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the announcement.
It was.
All right, next case? Y'all know I'm hard of hearing, so sometimes I might have to ask.
Not just when I talk.
No, not just when you talk.
All right. This is a request to rezone from RR, which is Rural District, to B3. The subject property is located in District 15, just north of County Road 64. The property consists of 3.24 acres. And I stated a minute ago, they want to go from RR, Rural District, to B3, General Business. There is currently a business use on the subject property that was grandfathered in when Planning District 15 became zoned. You can see it's surrounded by RR, RA, and RSFE. To the south is the Bell Forest School. The property to the east that is zoned RR is also used commercial, and then there's some vacant and residential property in the area. These are the factors staff considered. They met all except for number three, which is to conform to the master plan. It was questionable. It fell within a moderate density, but was near a urban mixed-use center. And staff has recommended approval from RR to B3. And the planning commission also recommended approval, eight to zero.
Commissioners, any questions? With staff?
No.
All right, no questions? All right. Open up the public hearing for case number, oh, Lordy, ES7. I think I have one signed up. Jessica McDeal. Thought I recognized that name. I was like...
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. If you have any questions this morning on our application, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that didn't sign up? Excuse me. Has anybody else that did not sign up that wants to talk about this case? All right. Open up the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve case number Z 24-46, Bed and Blind Incorporated.
I'll second it.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed. It's approved. All right. The next two cases, we're going to do them together?
Correct. Yes.
And that's ES8, oh, excuse me, Z 24-31 and the PRD together?
Correct. All right. So, this is a request for rezoning in a PRD, which is a planned residential development. The subject property is located in District 15, just west of 181 and north of Pleasant Road. The proposed use is for a 295-unit planned residential development. The current zoning is RA, RSFE, and B2. And the applicant is requesting that the overall three properties be RSF2 and RMF6 multifamily. It consists of 89 acres. The total lots requested is 132 single-family and 156 townhomes. The density for the single-family is 2.81 lots an acre, which is a little less than what can be asked for. And then, for the multifamily, it is 3.93 lots an acre, which is, they're allowed up to six. There's 17.81 acres of open space, and 8.9 of that is usable. Here, you can see on the zoning map, to the north is the city of Daphne. There's also some B2 in the area, some CR and RSFE, and several business zonings. This is the proposed rezoning. The map to the left shows what the zoning currently is. The yellow-hatched area is RSFE. The green area is RA, and the pink area is B2. And then, to the right is what the applicant is requesting, which the yellowish area would be all RSF2. The orange area would be RMF6, which is multifamily. And then, that bottom part would remain B2. These are the factors staff considered. They met all. Factor number five about the traffic is questionable at the PRD application. They are not required traffic study, but would be required a traffic study when they submit for their subdivision permit. The subject property is located in a mid-development potential area, which allows different types of housing, cottage homes, townhomes, multifamily. Staff, oh, well, hang on a minute. Okay, this is the site plan. The townhomes are in the eastern portion, closer to 181, which is adjacent to B2. This is the site data table and a graphic that shows the lot widths and the setbacks. This is their amenity plan. They plan on pavilions, playgrounds, paved walking trails, and then mulched trails throughout the development. Staff has recommended approval of the rezoning from RA and RSFE to RSF2 and B2 to RMF6. The planning commission also recommended approval, seven-to-one, at their last meeting. And I believe our planning director, Jay Dixon, has some additional comments he'd like to give.
Good morning again. Like before, I just wanted to go through a little bit more background on the history of this project and our recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation. So, in this case, yeah, there's very few areas in the county where we have a more urbanized setting like we have here along 181. This is a major corridor, as we all know, and it's where we would anticipate mixed use and higher intensity uses to occur in the county. So, this is a little different than a lot of the things we see that are in other parts of the county. In this case, the, as Selena mentioned, it does conform with the master plan and a lot of our long-range planning documents. And I think some of the important things to understand here is that the portion along 181, obviously, there's about 16 acres that are being left in the commercial use, which is what would be appropriate for fronting that corridor. And that the intensity of that use transitions down as you move away from 181 into the more residential sections of the surrounding uses. The PRD, in this case, is really important because it does lock in the master plan. As you can see, this has substantially more amenities and different things than a standard subdivision would happen. So, the PRD overlay is a very important piece of this. The RMF6, I know density is always a big discussion item here, and it does allow up to six units an acre. However, with the PRD overlay, that's being capped at 3.9 units per acre, and that can't be modified without coming back before the planning commission and county commission. So, there's a lot of good merit to how this project's been put together. And if you see there, the townhomes up front near the commercial area has a lot of green space, usual space, which is what we really encourage on mixed-use developments and higher-density developments, is to really have open space, have amenities. So, as you have smaller lots, you can have more community space in a planning community like this. I believe this development is proposing four different product types, and that's a major component to our PRD regulations, is to encourage creativity in design and multiple housing types, to have some diversity in price points and different things in the character of the development. So, as we reviewed this, and our recommendation and the planning commission agreed, was, you know, this is what we would really anticipate to see in this area. It was a well-thought-out master plan with a lot of amenities and a lot of stormwater storage and different things to make sure we are capturing everything on site. And so, be glad to answer any questions. Again, this is just the zoning portion. Depending on the outcome of the vote, this development would have to go through a subdivision process, which would kick in a lot of other traffic studies and other things that would come at a later stage of the application process. But be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
Okay. The picture you have up there right now, where 181 is and the two entrances, that's definitely, would be set based on this plan that's here. So, is those entrances already, I mean, because the outland parcels are not part of this PRD. So, is that a definite entrance?
Yes, they would have to conform. Now, in the commercial piece, they could shift slightly because the commercial piece is not part of the PRD.
No, I'm talking about the entrance ways.
Right. So, where it enters, there's a little, since this, on the bottom of the screen, we have the commercial, the B2 pieces are not part of the PRD. They're going to remain B2 outside of the PRD. So, there is some flexibility when the applicant works with ALDOT to make sure they meet ALDOT requirements for State Route 181. But as it goes west and enters into the PRD portion, those points and the master plan from that point west is locked in by the master plan.
And before it could actually happen, they have to do the traffic study?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
But that's the next phase, if this were approved?
Right. The next phase would be traffic studies and more detailed design for drainage.
Drainage and all that kind of stuff. It's what comes along in an actual subdivision. But as far as the plat or the layout, this is it.
The master plan, that is the requirement of the PRD, is it locks in place the master plan as approved. So, any substantial modifications to the master plan would have to be reapproved.
Okay.
Should anything substantially change.
Just clarifying.
What would happen if ALDOT did not grant and said that, I've never seen one of these where ALDOT would come in and say, you know, "We can't approve this traffic plan here. It's not going to work." Would they go back to the draw, have to come back to us to...
Depending on the severity of the change, possibly. But again, what ALDOT's going to be looking at is going to be where those connection points touch 181. So, if they work with ALDOT to figure out a plan and connect back to the roadway network that's proposed in the PRD portion, then it wouldn't necessarily change anything for our master plan approval. But if there's a substantial change with anything in that process with ALDOT, yes, there's possibility of that.
Could ALDOT, I mean, right now, I know we're not talking about traffic, but maybe one of their recommendations could be like a deceleration lane coming into there and not using 181 as direct flow off of.
Right. They would have full authority over what improvements to the intersections at 181 would require, as well as where Pleasant Road hits 181, because they have a secondary entrance on to Pleasant Road. So, ALDOT will also review through the traffic study process that intersection at Pleasant Road and 181.
But that would, if they denied access off of 181, that would be a major change.
That would be a major change.
And that would not be something that could keep going.
That would be a major change. And if you notice the layout, the way the designers have laid this one out, is the southernmost entrance is kind of the main street entrance. If you see that, because that goes all the way up through the development. The northern entrance is really more of a secondary-style entrance on the 181. And again, ALDOT will review all that. But yes, if there were some major thing like that that came out of the ALDOT review, that would probably, you know, that would most likely institute some type of major change to the master plan.
Have you ever seen ALDOT do that? Change it?
I mean, you'd never say never, but I would think in this situation, one of those two entrances will probably be permitted.
That's rare.
Yeah, there may be some restrictions on the other one, like a ride-in, ride-out, or some modified-type intersection. You know, that's a kind of typical approach that the state uses, but that's outside of our jurisdiction. That's pretty much up to ALDOT. But I think the likelihood of them denying any kind of access to 181 is pretty low.
So, beside the traffic study, what else has to be done?
During the preliminary plat process, they have to go through full drainage studies and designs and all that as part of the, you know, this, keep in mind, this is the zoning action.
Yeah, so this, I just want the people to know that this, voting on this yes or no, whatever, if it was a yes, it doesn't approve this, as far as, they're not going to go out there and start building it right away.
That's correct.
It's still got a lot of hurdles. It's still got a lot of hurdles to go through to get to the building phase.
That is correct. So this here is, is the zoning action. And because it's a PRD, it does have a master plan attached to the approval. This does not authorize them to go to construction. This, this authorizes the zoning to allow this development to happen. If that happens, then they still have to come back through the preliminary plat process, which, which you start getting to a lot of the technical side of, you know, traffic and stormwater utilities and that side. So there's, there's several more steps to, would occur beyond this.
What's the total lots?
295, I believe.
How many acres do you remember?
85.
Eighty-nine acres?
Eighty-nine total, yes, sir. So we had, what was the breakdown is there's 39 acres of RMF6, 49 acres of RSF2, and 16 acres that will remain B2. And one thing I failed to mention earlier is that the RMF6 for the townhomes, staff gave them that direction during review because with the PRD, keep in mind, a PRD is an overlay district, so the underlying uses, the uses allowed are dictated by the underlying zoning district. So to allow townhomes, they would need to have the RMF6 underlying zoning. So that's why there's a big discrepancy with, you know, it allows up to six units an acre, but the PRD is restricted to 3.9 units an acre, because it wasn't about the density, it was about the type of use.
And I know we're not here, we're here for the rezoning, but, you know, Pleasant Road with that entrance, I just got a question. I guess, I don't know.
So on Pleasant Road too, I failed to mention this, you know, the county also has a county project that's east of here, the Pleasant Road extension, and there's some regional detention and other things going on that really has little to do with this development, but it will help traffic flow in this overall area. So as the traffic studies are conducted, that Pleasant Road extension will be studied as part of that.
And one thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The one question that I, not really a question, but a statement I want to say is that a lot of people on 181 are fussing about old farm, old field, you know, the old place that used to be the Cortes, no traffic lights, anything. So if this, if this happens, I just feel like it's going to be congested more on 181. That's just my opinion. So I'm just thinking, what is ALDOT going to do if they, if they come back later and do the, the traffic study and it says, well, they need to put, they're not going to say it needs a traffic light because they don't want any traffic lights hardly on there, on 181. They want to keep the traffic flowing north or south. So I just wanted to make that. I'm not trying to.
Well, that would all be part of ALDOT's review and, you know, that process, they go through the traffic study and signal warrants, and, you know, and if it meets signal warrant, you know, that's things that they consider. So, you know, that's really outside of.
That's right.
That's part of the next phase and also outside of kind of, since this is a state highway, you know, that we have little input on what ALDOT will and will not allow on 181.
I got one more question. There's a stubout on the slide that you have up and the, it looks like it's stubbing out into the west. Looks like if I'm looking at the other, I'm looking at a different map over here that shows the adjacent zoning. I had to turn it so I could compare it, but it looks like that's RSFE County behind it. But if I'm looking at the satellite picture of it, it looks like it's just bare land right now. I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at slide number, let's see, one, two, three, four.
This one?
There, yeah. I had to turn it though, because this is how the way it is, but I had to make it, I had to turn it on my screen so that it was faced the same way as you had your other screen. So now we're looking west, but like where, like the green section that's RA, the piece next to that's the RSFE, there is a stubout in the layout of the thing, so is that?
So what, another thing we require with PRDs is reserving stubout connections to adjacent properties. So in the, if anything ever develops in the future, there's a place to have interconnectivity between developments, which is a really important component of traffic circulation. And in this case, you know, there's, it's unzoned, I mean, it's RSFE and it's undeveloped and everything like that. It's really just making sure that we don't box in this development to the west, that if something ever happens west of here, that there is a place they can connect. And, you know, if you look long-term, say, say this project that's in front of you now builds out and they have their commercial and their mixed use, and then there's something happens to the west, it would be nice for anything to the west to be able to go directly to that commercial area without having to get out on the major roads. It just helps traffic circulation as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't see any access to those lots, the way they're drawn on the, the yellow and green and pink map, but, you know, it's hard to tell from.
Yeah, so.
Unless it's just.
You can see right here, so you see the dash lines to the, on the top side of the page there?
Yeah.
That connection, it kind of goes to that, you know, northernmost adjacent property, but it's really not about the current parcels, it's about.
I know.
Reserving for.
I just know that in other cases we've had, you know, where there was a stubout going into something and that was.
So what?
That was an interesting comments that came about, and I just happened to, you know.
So what we do in these situations on developments is that as this project builds, they reserve that right-of-way stubout connection to the west in this case, but the roadway piece isn't constructed. So it doesn't have a little stubout dead in.
Okay.
It just reserves, it reserves the right-of-way. So if something happens to the west, they can build through and connect.
Okay, that helps me. Okay, thank you. I thought that was a simple question, but it ended up being a lengthy one. All right, thank you, Jade.
Commissioners, anything else?
Oh.
All right, open up the public hearing on this case, and it's going to be both of them, the PRD and the rezoning. I have a James Clark. Mr. Clark?
Good morning, Mr. Clark. You have three minutes, sir, when you start, unless you're speaking on behalf of somebody.
I live on Pleasant Road, and of course, my main concern is not how many houses are built or whatever, is the traffic. Because even during, drive down Pleasant Road during morning or evening rush hour and 64 and 181, when they's coming in like that, I read what you said, there has to be a traffic light somewhere. People in these subdivisions won't ever get out. I know it's taken me sometimes 10, 15 minutes across the street, get my mail during rush hour. So I got to where I don't go during rush hour. It's not safe, but, and it's, and I think I heard him say that they're going to do a survey on the traffic. Is that correct?
That phase happens in the, it has to be, go through another phase of.
Because I know there had been one of them little rubber hoses across the road.
It has to be another form.
To count it, whatever.
Traffic study's not part of this one, but before they can ever do anything, they have to go through a traffic study and some other drainage.
That's my main concern.
More of what goes on in a subdivision approval, which this is outside of this, yeah.
Yeah. Well, traffic is my main concern. So hopefully, something will be done about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Will Graham?
Hi, I'm Will Graham. I'm with Jade Consulting. I'm representing the applicant for this, for this project. So if y'all have any, any questions for me, I'm just here to, here to answer anything, so.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Will?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
I got Ben Schofield. Mr. Ben?
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to come to you. I live four houses down on Pleasant Road from the proposed entrance exit of this development. I've been there 19 years. I live in the original house on a dirt road that was there. The traffic has already been stated as horrendous. I was involved in a non-chargeable accident coming off Pleasant Road onto 181, going toward the gas station in the turn lane, moving along, and somebody decided to get into my lane, pushed me across two lanes of traffic at 6 o'clock, and thank the Lord I wasn't hit. But the traffic, the speeding is horrendous to begin with. The traffic is there, whether they're going to Tryon Park, elementary school, the high It's a Pleasant Road part of this is one mile straight, flat drag strip. The only people that can patrol it is the county and the highway patrol, and, you know, as you know, they're very limited. So having this development exit and then enter on the Pleasant Road, to me, doesn't make any sense. It's bad enough to have more farmland going into commercial condominiums or apartments and then homes. It's just going to increase the traffic flow. You already have everything, I mean, it's busy, busy, busy on 181 regardless of the time. Appreciate your time. I would ask for your denial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Will, will you come, will you come back up? Because I have a question. I guess the question that I have, you heard that gentleman about traffic, do you have to, with the development going on, could you not put something on Pleasant Road, an entrance? Could you just, well, I guess you could. You would have to put an entrance, wouldn't you?
Well, we think it's critical for the circulation, you know, to have interconnectivity, to be able to disperse the traffic.
Yeah, I was just asking.
Yes, sir.
I figured you had to have an entrance there.
Yes, sir, and.
Being so close to the road too, you know?
Yes, sir. But yes, we, we will be doing a traffic study when we get to the next phase, the preliminary plat phase, and we'll abide by all suggestions for improvements that that gives.
Yeah, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan Dean? She's, you're going to speak on her behalf?
Yeah, I got a group with me too, so I'm going to need every bit of that.
Five minutes? I'll give you five minutes if you speak on a group. Is the group the residence?
I gave you nine years, so I'm going to need at least six minutes.
Well, I'm going to give you five. How about that? We'll be patient. Let's see how you do.
All right. Well, as far as the, well, my name is Sam Dean. My wife is Susan. We live at 9539 Pleasant Road. If you'll put the other map up that shows the Holden Ponds as well, and I'd like this to be on the record, upper left-hand corner, that big Holden Pond that runs right up against my property, if this thing is approved. But as far as the entrance, our main concern is that entrance at Pleasant Road. And I don't want a one-acre Holden Pond right across my fence either. This is a engineering, I don't know where it came from, my wife downloaded it on November 4th, 2024, if you allow me to read it. Burford King, on behalf of the permit engineer, staff is concerned about the proposed turnout on the Pleasant Road. Pleasant Road is classified as a major collector. The proposed Pleasant Road turnout would be placed approximately 120 feet from the existing residential turnout and thus will not comply with turnout safety spacing requirements under development by the Baldwin County Highway Department. A traffic study is not required for the PRD, and thus it is not known what improvements the traffic study will recommend. Staff's greatest concern will be stacking of vehicles in front of the residence that exist in the two residence on the right-hand lane, in a right-hand turn lane would be required. Further, it is possible that a left-hand lane from Pleasant Road may be required. And if so, there's a possibility of two turn lanes in front of two residences, which one of them is ours, and significant road widening would be required. Now, I don't know where this came from, but it was dated November 4th of 2024. Number one, I don't want a one-acre Holden Pond right beside my house. That's been farmland, I mean, my wife's great-grandfather came over here in 1890s. So we're embedded in that community. It's not like, you know, people just moved in five or 10 years ago. My wife and I built our house 40 years ago there. And we've seen unsubstantiated growth out there, to say the least. Now, you go in there, that's farmland, that's how much topsoil you got, eight to 10 inches at the most. Then you hit a clay base as hard as its table. I, I was borderline on my perk test building my house out there. You go in there and put one, two, three miles of asphalt, thousands of yards of concrete bases for those apartments, where's that water going to go? I guarantee you those Holden Ponds ain't going to hold it. When we went and had Hurricane Danny, you had five inches of standing water for two weeks from 181 all the way to 13, and all the way from Pleasant Road to over there where the high school road is. Stood there for two weeks because it wouldn't penetrate that clay base. You're going to have those Holden Ponds filled up, and that water's going to have nowhere to go. And I've got a one-acre Holden Pond, they're going to throw all that water right to my We are adamantly opposed to, number one, the subdivision as a whole, and especially that entrance to Whispering, I mean, to Pleasant Road, based on that, what I just read you from the engineer. And you hadn't even done a proposal on it yet. I mean, it seems like to me they would have their ducks in order before they even come and ask you for this request. Have all the necessary structural components put together and then propose it to you. I don't want my, I mean, that's why my house is built four blocks off the, off the ground, because of the water issues that's been out there for years and years. Like I said, and I just wanted to elaborate too, if they put.
You got 15 seconds.
If they have these turning lanes, they're going to have a lot of, you've got underground structures, I mean, water, gas, and sewage lines on the north side of Pleasant Road now. All that's going to have to be dug up and moved to accommodate these turning lanes. Do you have any questions for me? We, and we don't want, you know, at least consider that entrance on Pleasant Road as null and void. They've got two entrances going in off of 181. They don't need that at Pleasant Road, especially if they're going to dig up my front yard and put a turning lane in.
What was your name again, sir?
Sam Dean.
Sam Dean, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan, you let Sam speak on your behalf, correct? All right, thank you.
You don't believe me?
No, don't believe, I believe you. Is anybody else that wants to speak on this case that did not sign up?
I will.
Come on up here, sir, and tell me your name, please, and where do you live? Come up to the mic first. Come up to the mic and do it.
I'm Bob Allen. I also live on Pleasant Road, not too far from where Sam Dean lives. I just want to kind of back up what he was saying about the big problem for most of the people on Pleasant Road is that access off of Pleasant Road into the subdivision. Traffic right now, it already stacks up just going down the road, and if you have turn lanes with traffic flowing in to get those into the subdivision, I see it backing traffic all the way back up to 181. And the one thing I have never understood is how the Pleasant Road extension is going to get traffic off of Pleasant Road. It's going to put more traffic on Pleasant Road, backing up into those turn lanes. Because you have, you know, you'll have people coming down 64, they want to bypass the Belforst intersection, cut through Pleasant Road right when people are trying to get into those turn lanes to get to the new subdivision. So that's, I just want to reiterate, we think, or I think, the Pleasant Road access. So that's, I just wanted to reiterate, we think, or I think, the Pleasant Road access is the biggest issue for the people who are there now, and just general traffic flow.
All right. Well, thank you.
One other quick question. I'd like to see, before you make an approval of this, that you, like Sam was saying, have all the ducks in the row as far as the traffic studies and all that done ahead of time, because it's always hard to go back and disapprove something that's already been approved, and you remove some of your leverage to just completely make a major change, because you've already approved it. So why not have the traffic issues worked out ahead of time? And that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Anybody else that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this case? Close the public hearing.
I'd like to ask staff a couple of questions. I listed down the concerns. The concerns were traffic, 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 drainage, and then why we don't approve these ahead of time, and I would like for you to address that.
Yes, ma'am. So the way our ordinance is written currently, you know, traffic studies are not required at the PRD stage, which, again, this is the zoning stage, this is not the final approval of this project. There's multiple other stages beyond this. So just a reminder that, you know, the zoning, you know, that's more about compatibility and what's, you know, what land use is going to, you know, be happening in the area. Traffic and drainage and these things are coming, those are subdivision issues, which is much more of a technical issue, those are the next steps. So those aren't being approved today. Those, you know, this is the first, first step of many that will have to happen to approve this project or any project like that. So, you know, and the comments about the things at the connection, the proposed connection to Pleasant Road, those will all be determined on the traffic study. Those comments, those were in the staff report, and it was really just to put in there that as the next phases start occurring, that the design engineers should start looking at those to make sure that they're not having any conflicts. Obviously, anything that's done there would have to accommodate the existing driveways in the design, and any kind of turn lanes if they're required. Again, that's more of a secondary access, the traffic study may not even require traffic turn lanes at that intersection, we don't know yet, that'll be the next phase. But if they, any improvements that aren't necessary at Pleasant Road would have to occur within the right-of-way, so it would not get into anyone's private property or yard. And all the underground utilities and anything else that's present there would have to be addressed during that design process. It's very, this is a very common practice in engineering and design, this, it happens with every county project and every development project, so this is nothing uncommon. The stormwater, again, is another technical review process that happens during the subdivision application. You know, again, this, today's PRD case in front of you does not permit them to go to construction. This is just getting the zoning in place that would say that we would have, we...
So this is about use?
This is about use, that's correct.
Okay, and the reason that, I would say that it would probably sound confusing that you go ahead and agree to a layout before that you do that, but just want to reiterate, this is not in stone on the PRD, it's just, I mean, it is, but it ain't. As far as, if the traffic study comes back and says something that can't happen, like ALDOT doesn't allow those, there's no way you would dump all the traffic out on the smaller roads, right? I mean, I'm just asking a question.
They would have to come back.
And also, let me clarify something that I want to get in my head. There has been a lot of requests for traffic signals on 181 by various different groups, and that decision, I know, is an ALDOT decision. I live on the other side of the county, and I've seen how it has to work with Highway 59. A lot of times, that's a, it's a joint effort between the county, municipality, and ALDOT. And by the potential adding this many lots and things may then warrant, but it would still have to have ALDOT's blessing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then if the drainage doesn't work, and if the traffic doesn't work once they get to that next phase, then this will not...